Town moderator, I'm joined to my right by Nicole Manfredi. She is the Assistant Town Moderator, will also be appointing Melissa Matinzi as a second Assistant Town Moderator. And we have to my left, we welcome Gail Butler, and she is the First Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, joined by Stephen Neerman, who is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. To their left, we have Kevin Canty, the Vice Chair of the Select Board, Kelly McKelreth, who is our Town Clerk, Derek Brindisi, who is our Town Manager, and will also be joined by Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. And at the town meeting on October 19th, 2024, will begin at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and we will begin after the opening ceremonies with some presentations from the Chair of the Select Board, will also be hearing from the Advisory and Finance Committee and from the Assistant Town Moderator, and I will give my introductory remarks. Then we will go into procedural motions. We have three, two of which we're going to handle at the start of the town meeting. And the first motion is to move that all sessions of the Fall Annual Town Meeting be commenced and conducted by remote hybrid representative town meeting by means of Zoom webinar and OTI virtual voting platforms. And again, like to welcome Gail Butler. Gail?
I need to go to solve this, I'm sorry. Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee, we support the Fall Annual Town Meeting be commenced and conducted as a remote hybrid representative town meeting by means of the Zoom webinar and OTI virtual voting platforms.
And it'll be a majority and it's electronic voting, and these initial procedural motions usually are without debate, although we can have debate, but it'll be an opportunity for town meeting members to become familiar once again with the electronic voting. The second procedural motion, Ms. Butler moves that adjourned sessions of this Fall Annual Town Meeting be held on Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee moves that the adjourn session of this Fall Town Meeting be held on Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. And then we do have one other procedural motion, but we're going to wait and hold that until just before Article 19, since it's a procedural motion to deal with charter changes. And so then, next we'd be going into Article 1, the Supplemental Budget, the General Fund, and we have a motion for a Subcommittee Report B. Ms. Butler moves a town vote to amend the votes taken under Article 7A of the Subcommittee Report B. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee votes to amend the votes taken under Article 7A Subcommittee Report B by increasing the original appropriation by $985,727, items 15 through 29, for the purposes listed in Article 1, Fiscal Year 25 Budget Amendments Report attached to these motions, and further to increase, raise, and appropriate by $1,145,130 and decrease the amount transferred from Payment Management Debt Fund by $159,403.
Thank you. And on all of these, we can have debate, and this is going to be a majority vote. We're going to go through these various motions as they are being presented, and this evening, I believe we may have some extra copies to make available to the public that are here, because we have quite a few motions that have come in since the motions were originally sent out to town meeting members. We have a number of motions to amend, so they'll be over there on a table and available to town meeting members. And at this point, we're going to go to the next motion, Subcommittee Report C. Ms. Butler moves a town vote to amend the votes taken under Article 7A Subcommittee Report C. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted 12-0-0 in favor. The town vote amend the votes taken under Article 7A Subcommittee Report C, items 30 through 44, for the purposes listed in Article 1, Fiscal Year 25 Budget Amendments Report attached to these motions, and to transfer $104,544 from Personnel Services to all other expenses.
Thank you. Again, a majority vote. And Article 2 is withdrawn, Article 3 is withdrawn. And before we go any further, I'll report to the group here that we do have some articles that are not going to be moving forward. I've ruled them out of order. When we come to them, I will explain that to those who are here. But now we're going to go to the motion to Article 4, Items A1, A4, A6, and A8, and there is a spreadsheet regarding the various projects. Ms. Butler moves the town appropriate the sum of $843,919 to pay costs of various capital projects. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee moves the town appropriate the sum of $843,919 to pay costs of various capital projects listed as Item 1 through A4, A6, and A8 in Article 4 of the 224 Fall Town Meeting warrant by unanimity 11-0-0. Meeting warrant is set forth in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee as shown in the above table, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, $476,850 shall be transferred from free cash, $77,069 shall be transferred from the Fire Prevention Revolving Fund, $10,100 shall be transferred from the Environmental Affairs Fund, $261,900 shall be transferred from the Water Retained Earnings, and $18,000 shall be transferred from Airport Retained Earnings.
Thank you. It's a majority vote, roll call if it's not unanimous. And as we move on, Article 4A5 will be treated separately. It's the Route 80 Cemetery, and Ms. Butler moves the town appropriates the sum of $3,472,162. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the sum of $3,472,162 to pay for the cost of Route 80 Cemetery project by vote of unanimity 11-0-0. And for the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $972,162 under general law, Chapter 44, Subchapter 7, Parenthesis 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and $2,500,000 shall be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. It's a two-thirds vote, we'll be voting electronically. These are treated separately because they are two-thirds. We have a motion for Article 4A7 Water System Improvements, and Ms. Butler moves the town appropriate the sum of $2,664,450 to pay cost of water system improvement projects. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the sum of $2,664,450 to pay costs of water systems improvement projects, and for the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $2,664,450 under general law, Chapter 44, Subchapter 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Unanimous vote of 11-0-0.
Thank you. That's a two-thirds vote. At this time, going to call on Assistant Town Moderator Nicole Manfredi, who is going to make some comments about participating electronically. Nicole Manfredi?
Good evening. Tonight, we have provided remote access to town meeting members who are unable to attend in person through Zoom. I will be monitoring the chat throughout the meeting. If at any time you would like to be heard, please indicate this in the chat, and we will add you to the speaking queue. Once the moderator indicates that it is your turn to speak, I will move you from an attendee to a panelist, and you will be asked to unmute your microphone. A few reminders, the deadline to submit charter amendments is tomorrow at noon. Additionally, the deadline to register for remote participation is also noon tomorrow. You must email myself and the Town Clerk requesting this accommodation, and as always, no exceptions can be made after that noon deadline. Tomorrow, members will be committed to their format choice for all of town meeting, which will include any adjourned sessions.
Thank you. And any other motions to amend with respect to articles other than charter articles, we can receive up until next week. But again, the sooner we receive them, the more likely they'll be able to be presented appropriately. Kelly McKelreth is our Town Clerk. Kelly, anything else you want to add about remote participation?
No, I did send out an email this morning, and we are getting a pretty good response of people, has a reminder of people to send me some emails, so I think we're pretty much close to the number we've been in the past.
Thank you. Article 5 is withdrawn, Article 6 is withdrawn, Article 7, Pavement Stabilization Fund, Ms. Butler moves the town vote to authorize Select Board to appropriate $1,430,159. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends, voted unanimously 13-0-0, for Article 1, approval of this article will authorize the town to transfer $1,430,159 from free cash to the Pavement Management Plan Debt Stabilization Fund for future use as it relates to road repair maintenance and/or construction in the town. This amount is the excess of actual motor vehicle excise receipts of the amount budgeted for fiscal year 24. Current balances in the fund is $4,604,878.
And it's a majority vote and roll call. Article 8, a Bylaw Amendment on Wetlands Protection, Vernal Pools, and Ms. Butler moves the town vote to amend the Plymouth General Bylaw, Chapter 196, Wetlands Protection. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously, no, voted 11 yes, 1 no, no abstentions, to recommend the town meeting approve 8. Approval of this article will amend the bylaw for Chapter 196, Wetlands Protection, to include vernal pools in the definition section, and to increase the protection area of vernal pools to 200 feet.
Thank you. It's a majority vote. Article 9, the first article is the CPC Housing for South Landing Apartments, Megco Inc., and tonight, we're joined by Ed Bradley, he's the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and he's advised that this has been withdrawn. Is that correct, Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
And that is, so although those of you here this evening see that printed in the motions, Lynn Barrett will have Jeanette remove that, because it's been withdrawn. And so we're going to then move on to Article 10, Open Space, Black Cat Road, and Ms. Butler moves Select Board is authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise for open space pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44B. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously 12-0-0 to recommend town meeting approve Article 10. Approval of this article authorized the Select Board to purchase 93 acres of land located Black Cat Road and Water Course Road for open space contingent upon the town receiving a grant from the state to reimburse the town 90% of the purchase price.
And moving on with that, that's a two-thirds vote, be roll call. And Article 11, Open Space Recreation Full Sale, Ms. Butler moves Select Board authorized to purchase by, to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise open space recreational purposes pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44B. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously 11, sorry, voted 11 yes, 0 no, 1 abstention, to recommend town meeting approve Article 11. Approval of this article will authorize the Select Board to purchase 15,771 square feet of land located at 277 Taylor Avenue and St. Charles Avenue for recreational purposes. The oceanfront property will increase the length of White Horse Beach, affording the public more access to the beach. Additionally, the appropriation includes demolition of an existing structure, improvements consistent with recreational purposes of ADA compliance, and the purchase of associated parcels will increase parking.
Thank you, it's a two-thirds vote, and we're going to move on to Article 12, CPC Budget Amendment, and we will have staff available to answer questions on these, also the Community Preservation Committee. Article 12 is a budget amendment to reduce the debt service. Ms. Butler moves the town vote to amend Article 16G of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Gail Butler?
16G, do we skip the others?
On Article 12.
I'm sorry, thank you. Okay. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommended unanimously the town meeting approve Article 12. Approval of this article will reduce the original fiscal year 25 debt service budget by $56,395. The actual cost for the borrowed project has been received and is significantly lower than estimated, so the budget is being amended to reflect the actual cost.
Thank you. Majority vote. And then Article 13 is an affirmation of an article for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, Article 16B. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted 8 yes, 3 no, 1 extent, abstentions. The town meeting approve, meeting approve Article 13. Approval of the article will reaffirm the April 24th, 2024 affirmative vote of town meeting. At the April 2024 Town Meeting, there was some misinformation stated on the floor of the town meeting, so the town felt that an affirmation article would provide disputable confirmation of the voters' intentions.
And this is the majority vote. Moving on to Article 14, it's an easement in Stevens Field. Ms. Butler moves the town will vote to authorize Select Board to grant and convey to N-Star Electric Company an easement. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommended, voted unanimously 12-0-0, and recommends town meeting approval Article 14. Approval of this article shall grant an easement to EverSource Energy for the purpose of installing, maintaining, upgrading, relocating, and inspecting the collective facilities and all necessary operations to effectuate transmission and/or distribution of electricity at Stevens Field.
It's a majority vote. And then Article 15 is a Title V Repair Fund. Ms. Butler moves that $400,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing water pollution abatement facility projects. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously 11-0-0, recommends town meeting approve Article 15. Approval of this article will allow the town to borrow $400,000 through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust to fund the Title V Betterment Loan Program. These low-interest loans are available to town residents meeting certain income criteria on a first-come, first-served basis to fund septic system replacement or repair. Historically, the fund for this program has been refreshed as funds are deleted.
Thank you. And it's a two-thirds vote. And at this time, I'd just like to mention, we'd like to thank David Antoine, who's a Government Services Manager for the Local Scene, and his staff. And Mr. Antoine reports that tonight's presentation will be replayed on Sunday at 12 and 4:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. on Comcast 9 and Verizon 47. It'll also be immediately available online on youtube.com slash at Plymouth Meetings. And at this time, Article 16, Zoning Bylaw, the Village Open Space Development Amendments, and Ms. Butler moves that the town vote to amend the Town of Plymouth zoning bylaw. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously 11-0-0, and recommends town meeting approve Article 16. Approval of this article will allow for a lower-density alternative to the multifamily housing that is currently permitted in the waterfront district. The Village Open Space Development, VOSD, special permit process is intended to allow flexible alternatives with a density of two units per acre, and a minimum of 40% of the property shall be permanently protected open space.
Thank you. Tonight is a presentation night as well as a preview, and following Article 17 being read into the record and hearing from the Finance Committee, we will have a presentation. Ms. Butler moves the town will vote to authorize Select Board petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation to establish a Plymouth Land Bank. Gail Butler?
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously 11-0-0, recommend the town meeting approve Article 17. Approval of this article will authorize the Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation to establish a Plymouth Land Bank. The land bank will be funded through a land transfer fee of between 1 and 2% paid by the buyers of real estate in Plymouth. Proceeds of the land bank may be used to acquire land for open space, passive and active recreation, create affordable housing, and establish municipal facilities.
It's a majority vote. At this time, we once again welcome Vice Chair of the Select Board, Kevin Canty, for his presentation. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board. The Article 17 is an article put forward by the Planning Board, but it is also in the fiscal year goals of the Select Board as well, so this is supported by both the Planning Board and the Select Board. I will be giving this presentation at town meeting. We will also be presenting and be available for questions. But without further ado, let's get into it. So, what would a land bank do for Plymouth? The land bank would provide a mechanism for buying land for the following uses, open space, passive and/or active recreation, conservation, aquifer protection. Passive or active recreation, you're talking nature trails, conservation areas, you're also talking playgrounds and parks that would be considered open space under this definition. Conservation speaks for itself, protecting the environment. Aquifer protection, aquifer protection is important in the town of Plymouth because we are over a sole source aquifer, meaning it is the single source of water for our community. Other communities also pull from our aquifer, but we're primarily obviously concerned with Plymouth. If something were to get into the aquifer and taint it or otherwise compromise it in some way, that could be disastrous for the future of our community growth threatens that aquifer, so it's important to protect open, the aquifer via open space purchases when appropriate in certain designated and vulnerable areas. Affordable housing is another designated purpose. Affordable housing under the land bank would be at 60% area median income. Area median income means exactly what it sounds like, the median income in a given area. The land bank in Plymouth are considered to be within an area that is designated by the Census, including not only us, but also places like Quincy, Cambridge, Boston, Braintree, places with higher standards of living, higher wages. So when you're in the Census Bureau in Washington, Plymouth looks very close to those places. Those of us that live here know we are not very close geographically or in other ways to those places. So 80% is the standard area median income for most affordable housing projects, but 80% in Plymouth of area median income based on that area that I just described puts it at, for a single bedroom unit, something like $2,500 a month for rent at those type of a unit. That's not really affordable by our definition and our consideration. So we're looking to have this be at 60%, which is much more affordable and more in line with what people could actually start to afford here in Plymouth. And that's the minimum that it has to be, it could be better than that, but that's the minimum. And then municipal use, schools, wells, fire stations, et cetera. And it would do all these things without raising taxes on residents. How will the land bank be funded? The buyer of real estate would pay a transfer fee of between 1 and 2% for the value of the property that they're buying. The land bank can adjust that fee within those goalposts, but it can't go lower than 1, it can't go higher than 2. The more land is sold in Plymouth, the more land is transferred in Plymouth, the more money the land bank will have for the purposes that it is set to achieve. So we want, this is special legislation, it's the first of three steps. If town meeting votes to approve this, it would then go to Beacon Hill to be passed by the state legislature, and then it would come back to Plymouth to be on a general election ballot and have to be approved by the general electorate, the voters here in town. But because it is special legislation, in order to make any modifications to it, we would at a minimum have to go to another town meeting and then have to pass more special legislation in the future at Beacon Hill. So we wanted to bake into it from the beginning, a 1 to 2% range, so that it could be adjusted. Say something like 2008 were to happen again, and the Land Bank Commission wanted to make it easier and less onerous on folks to transfer property, they could lower that fee down to that 1% mark at that time. And then, if we had had that at that time, say in 2013, 2014, when things were looking better, they could have brought it back up to 2% if they wanted to do so. Obviously, we don't want something like 2008 to happen again, but you never know, and we're trying to plan for that future, and we want it to already be in there from the beginning rather than have to wait 18 months to two years to amend it in the future. There are a number of exemptions to the transfer fee. Section 11 of the proposed legislation contains the exemptions. It's on page 143 of the Advisory and Finance Committee book that town meeting members have. I'm just going to highlight some of the notable ones for you now. So at a minimum, any property sold for $350,000 or less is exempt, subject to certain other qualifications, not everyone, but certain qualifications. So that's the floor there, $350,000. If this were five years ago, that would have been the median price approximately for a home in Plymouth, and now the median price is about $550,000. But we still wanted there to be a floor for these types of qualified purchases, that anything that's $350,000 or less would pay nothing, if it's over 350, you would pay the 1 to 2% of the entire purchase price. Land Bank Commission could raise that to higher than 350, they could make it any amount, they could make it $100 million if they wanted to. That's part of that built-in flexibility that we incorporated, like I talked about earlier, but that 350 floor is a minimum. Affordable housing is defined by any town, state, or federal program, including 80%. CPC, Affordable Housing Trust, those are at 80%. State and federal programs are often at 80%, as I said earlier. Although that is not as good as the affordable housing afforded by the land bank, we still want to encourage the existence of affordable housing in this community, that's why it's being exempted. First-time homebuyers where all purchasers on the deed qualify. So if everybody on the deed is a first-time homebuyer, they qualify. If one or more persons on that deed are not a first-time homebuyer, it does not qualify for a first-time homebuyer exemption. Intra-family transfers, charitable organizations, also Plymouth residents that are buying a new but not an additional residence. So, we are thinking of this 1 to 2% fee as the initiation fee to the club that is Plymouth. All of us are already residents of Plymouth, we're already members of the club. So, if you're moving your locker in that club from North Plymouth down to Manomet, you don't need to pay the fee, because you're still in the club, you just have a new locker space. But if you are buying a second property, say I live in North Plymouth and I'm buying a house in Manomet to rent out, that's an income property for me, an investment property, so I am not exempted, I would have to pay a transfer fee there. Say I buy commercial property, it's not going to be my primary principal residence, and I also own it something in Plymouth, then I'd have to pay that transfer fee. But if I just am moving within Plymouth, say I'm moving from North Plymouth down to South Plymouth, as long as I buy my second, my subsequent house in Plymouth, within eight months of selling my first one, I haven't left the club, I don't need to pay the initiation fee, I'm just changing locker space. These exemptions only apply if the property purchased is the principal residence of the individual, something to keep in mind. Who appoints the land bank commissioners? The Land Bank Commission is the body that oversees the land bank, there's nine members of that commission. Two of those members are appointed by the Select Board, two are appointed by the COPC, Body of Town Meeting, two are appointed by the Planning Board, one is appointed by the Affordable Housing Trust, one by the Open Space Committee, one by the Land Use and Acquisition Committee. None of these bodies may appoint either their own members or any elected official within the town of Plymouth to the Land Bank Commission. No Select Board members, school committee members, no town meeting members, because we need a level of independence in order to accomplish the goals of this land bank. Having them appointed also makes them more responsive. If they were elected officials, they would be subject to the recall provisions in the charter, which are very onerous, even on the proposed charter that's also in this town meeting, they're onerous and difficult to achieve. Under the current charter, you need to get a bunch of signatures within a very finite period of time, then you need to have voter turnout in the amount of 20%, which is a very high goal. When we had about 18 months ago, an election to change the entire charter of this community, only fewer than 16% came out to vote on that, so I very much doubt that most people, if they were elected, would come out to recall a land bank commissioner, their first question would probably be, what is a land bank commissioner? So, we think having them appointed where the appointing authority can remove them if they are malfeasant, negligent, not attending, is much more responsive. Further, the land bank commissioners can remove their own members. Say they had one of their nine members is disruptive, is antagonistic, is not following the rules, the other eight could remove that individual and give the appointing authority say, hey, we need another person because we removed that one, they weren't playing by the rules, and we had to get rid of them. So it makes it more responsive, more responsible, particularly given their level of independence. Why is the land bank structured like this? The independence is a core feature, it is intentional. If the land bank's decisions were subject to approval by any other town entity, like town meeting, the Select Board, the Planning Board, then it would be considered part of town government. If it were part of town government, that would be a problem. The community of Lexington has a representative town meeting, they tried to pass a land bank, it failed because it had direct town meeting oversight. It needs to go through Beacon Hill, it needs to be passed on Beacon Hill. We've learned from other land banks that have passed, there have been three in the Commonwealth, there was one on Cape Cod that eventually became functionally what the CPC is, CPA, so that one eventually went away. Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard have land banks that focus on open space and open space only, they're very successful. We've learned from those successful land banks. We've also learned from the ones that have been proposed and have failed. Although this, there have been three, this is not the fourth one that's been proposed. We've learned from the failures of other communities, and we want this to pass. We don't want the perfect to be enemy of the good, and we are emphasizing a passable piece of legislation here. It would also, if it were considered part of town government, there's other things it couldn't do, it couldn't pay above appraised value for a parcel. The Land Bank Commission will be able to do that because it is a separate entity. It would also not be able to invest the funds. They could, so say they wanted to save the money that they They could, so say they wanted to save the money that they're bringing in to pay towards the whole tech parcel, fifteen hundred and thirty point three five acres, largest single undeveloped piece of property in the community of Plymouth. If they wanted to invest that while they're waiting for that to come on the market, they could do so as the Land Bank Commission, but another part of town government would not be able to do so. The land bank is special legislation, as I alluded to, it needs to be passed into law at the State House. Less independent land bank proposals have failed at the state level. We want this to pass, as I said earlier, that's why we have written it and structured it the way that we have. The state is also very wary of proposals it views as being anti-housing. Affordable housing and the availability of housing is an issue in Plymouth, it's an issue in the Commonwealth, it's a priority for the governor and the state legislature. You're seeing things like forty B has been on the books for a number of years, decades. It overrides local zoning as sort of a nuclear option to encourage affordable housing if town communities don't do enough of it. Overriding things like commercial zoning and putting high-density residential, bad for Plymouth letting private developers choose the destiny of our community. The land bank is designed to allow Plymouth to choose the destiny of the community. You're also seeing affordable housing talked about, not just in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you're seeing it on the national level, you're seeing things like the MBTA Communities Law, other laws being passed in this state and elsewhere to encourage housing. States are very wary of anti-housing legislation. So that is why the affordable housing purpose is particularly important, because it makes it very clear that this is not an anti-housing proposal, it is an anti-irresponsible growth proposal. So, some people are asking, why do we need this if we have the CPC? Why do we need this if we have the Open Space Committee? Why do we need this if we have the Affordable Housing Trust? Well, first and foremost, those bodies, CPC, Open Space Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, they will all continue to exist, they will all continue to function as they always have. This is just another tool to add to the toolbox to accomplish these particular purposes. So it's not taking away from anyone else, it's just adding a tool for Plymouth to be able to control its own destiny. The land bank can operate outside the town meeting cycle. CPC, open space, they cannot do so. They need to function within the town meeting cycle. Property owners sometimes have items of property, parcels, that they need to get rid of at certain timeframes, because somebody died, a business is closing, things of that nature. They can't wait, always wait around for a town meeting. Now, we can call a special town meeting, but that costs extra money. It also takes thirty to forty-five days for us to get one done, and we tried to do one a few years ago, about thirty days, that was ultimately unsuccessful, to buy a piece of property, and it was a real headache to get that going. I was the chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee at the time, it basically ruined the month of June for me, very sad. But if we did it in forty-five days, we could have maybe accomplished that, but the problem is, you can't always wait for forty-five days. Private developers that are buying these parcels, they aren't waiting forty-five days. So we need to be competitive in ways that we can't currently, but this one can. Affordable housing is more affordable here, sixty percent AMI is more realistically affordable for Plymouth. Municipal use purpose will leverage the town's growth to meet the needs created by that growth. As more residents come in, we're going to need more wells, more fire stations, more schools. Town meeting would be involved in appropriating the funds to build a fire station. All the land bank does is buy the land for that future municipal use. So town meeting still has involvement at that stage, not at the acquisition of the land stage. The open space purpose will also leverage the town's growth to protect our aquifer and our environment as that growth continues to threaten it. The transfer fee is tied to the growth of this community. Massachusetts is currently the fastest-growing community in the Commonwealth. We are adding between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand people per year, that growth is drastic, and this will tie the availability of our funds to meet these specific designated needs directly to that growth, to these perennial needs in our community, adding another tool to the toolbox, not stepping on anyone else's toes, just making us a more competitive community for us to control our own future and mark our own destiny. So those are the reasons why we hope that you will support Article seventeen, Plymouth Land Bank. Thank you very much.
Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
I don't know if anybody here has questions, but again, we're thanking Kevin Canty, he is the Vice Chair of the Select Board. We do have a speakers list that we keep for people who notify us in advance. Any taxpayer, any resident can speak on any article. There is a town meeting rule that speaking priority is given to town meeting members. And so, again, if you have a presentation or wish to be heard, you know, please let me know, you can contact me in advance of town meeting. We're now going to move on to Article eighteen, it's a prudent investment, and Ms. Butler moves a town vote to accept the provision of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter two oh three C. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously eleven zero zero and recommends town meeting approval of Article eighteen. Approval of this article will authorize the treasurer to be more flexible in investing or reinvesting funds held in its custody in accordance with the prudent investor rule established under Chapter two oh three C of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you. And that is a majority vote. And at this time, we would begin the discussion on the charter amendments, and this is going to be, for this part of town meeting, it is possible to bring up other matters, you can always change the order of an article by a two-thirds vote, you can always move to reconsider an article if you vote on the prevailing side. But at this point, prior to Article nineteen, I have a third procedural motion. It's a motion to consolidate. It's a majority vote, and Joseph Hutchison, Precinct seventeen, moves to consolidate Articles nineteen to twenty-nine. Mr. Hutchison, if you come forward to the podium, and you can speak on behalf of your procedural motion to consolidate Articles nineteen and twenty-nine. Town meeting members have three minutes at town meeting, five minutes if you're making a motion in which to present on it. Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to consolidate Articles nineteen through twenty-nine and take an up or down vote on the charter. I believe this charter proposal is not ready for prime time and that we should take the time necessary to create an update of the current charter, not a rewrite. And I say this because of issues of separation of powers. This proposal disrupts the balance of power in town government by deleting the idea of an executive branch. Deleting that idea is important because the organization of town government is based on separation of powers, at least currently, and between the, on the separation of powers between the legislative and executive branches, just like it is in the United States Constitution. It's a system of checks and balances. The proposal ignores the idea of an executive branch. In fact, the committee deleted the entire executive chapter from the current charter and spread executive powers across multiple chapters and sections in the proposal. This will make it harder for town meeting members to oversee decisions and hold officials accountable. But the most important thing to remember is that it's the idea of the checks and balances between the two branches, checks and balances. The committee also claims that they've made the charter clearer and more accessible by way of their proposed organization. But the proposed organization removes critical context supplied by Massachusetts General Law and strips the charter of duties and responsibilities of major departments, finance, planning, and public works. You'll hear the word flexibility, but really what we're talking about is power. Power to reorganize departments, control funding, and even shape how town operations are explained through a proposed user guide, which is designed, created, and managed by the town manager. Town manager would have enhanced powers in this charter. The town manager already has powerful job description prescribed in the current charter, Section three dash five dash one, in Items A through U. It looks like a job description for a strong mayor. In fact, it's a list of prescribed duties and responsibilities, the work that the legislature and the public expect, the work of the town. So both Chapters two and three, in the current chapter, have lists of prescribed powers. In Chapter two, Section two dash three prescribes the powers of town meeting members. The committee removed that declaration, and so if you're a town meeting member and you're looking for the list of likely work, you go someplace else. Well, you go to Massachusetts General Law. Sections three dash six, three dash eight, and three dash thirteen prescribe the powers of the Department of Public Works, Department of Finance, and the Department of Planning and Development. All of these duties and responsibilities have been removed from the charter, and they're not just administrative details. The proposal removes the enumeration of these department duties and responsibilities, and those are tools town meeting uses to hold the executive accountable for doing the work of the town. The proposal makes way for discretionary powers that the town manager might want to adopt, the ability to reorganize departments, control funding, and shape directions of the town by way of the user guide. Flexibility equals power. You'll hear that word, flexibility, but what you're really talking about is power. These prescribed powers and discretionary powers enhance that power of the executive. Lastly, this is a confusing and awkward proposal. The review committee began its process using the current charter, which might be where you would expect it to begin. It's familiar to most of us because it's been in use for the past twenty-five years. But the current charter has been essentially ignored and replaced with a heavily edited proposal that makes it difficult for town meeting members to understand what's been changed. You would expect the map from the proposal back to the original. Proposing amendments is going to be a challenge, and then mapping those amendments back to the proposal and then back to the current charter, again, a challenge. Easy for town meeting members to get lost on the floor trying to take a vote. We need a charter that serves the town by clearly defining the balance of power and maintaining proper oversight. We need a charter that defines how our government works without having to search multiple documents and websites, and this is no way to make decisions about how that will impact the town, no, how, this is no way to make decisions about how the town is governed over the next decade. Please consolidate Articles nineteen, twenty-nine. Thanks.
Thank you. And that is Joseph Hutchison, Precinct seventeen, on his motion to consolidate. It is debatable, it is a majority vote, and after that vote is completed, we are then going to move on to Article nineteen, or all of the articles, depending on whether we consolidate or not. But for the time being, we're going to talk about Article nineteen, it's a charter amendment on format. Ms. Butler moves a town vote to authorize the Select Board petition the General Court to enact legislation pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-three B, Section ten. It's a two-thirds vote. Gail Butler.
Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously ten zero zero and recommends the town meeting approve Article nineteen. Approval of this article will amend the format of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposal Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. And we will debate this, as we'll debate all the articles. Now, for those of you that are watching, we did distribute some changes this evening on some of the motions you may have previously received as town meeting members. You can go to the town website, and I might request the Director of Finance, if we could, when practical, to email to all town meeting members the revised motions on the charter. Tomorrow's the deadline for submitting your charter amendments, we're not going to be amending on town meeting floor. That being said, Article twenty is an amendment on the powers of the town, and Ms. Butler moves town vote to authorize Select Board to petition the General Court to enact legislation. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously ten zero zero, recommends the town meeting approve Article twenty. Approval of this article will amend Chapter one of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
And that's a two-thirds vote on the main motion. We do have some motions to amend, those will be a majority vote, and moving to Article twenty-one, it has to do with town-wide elected. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously ten zero zero and recommends the town meeting approve Article twenty-one. Approval of this article will amend Chapter two of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposal Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. In the packet this evening, there is a motion to amend, however, I've been advised this evening from the superintendent that it may be withdrawn, so I'm going to come back to that and see if we can determine from Mr. Peiser whether he still wants to move forward. We're going to go to Article twenty-two, and we have motions to amend as well, but it's going to begin with Chapter three, the legislative branch. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously ten zero zero and recommends town meeting approve Article twenty-two. Approval of this article will amend Chapter three of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. And so we have multiple motions to amend. The first motion to amend is from Lori Downs, she's in Precinct seventeen. She moves to amend the main motion by substituting fourteen for ten in Chapter three, Section two, two dash nine dash two. We do have the town clerk here. Might ask the town clerk to just comment on this particular section in terms of what is being proposed and what the motion to amend would do.
So the ten days to the fourteen days?
Yes. Is your mic on?
Yes, sorry. So, right now, the charter states, I believe it's twenty days if there's a vacancy, I need to fill it, well, within thirty days, I'm not even quite sure. And what happens when there's a vacancy in a town meeting position, I go to the last local election and get the next highest vote getter and offer that person the position, and they have, I think it's like thirty days, and the charter review is recommending ten days. The amendment is making, is asking for fourteen days to give it to that person a little bit more time. There's, so I can say that I, it's been known, it has happened, that all of a sudden I'll find out that a town meeting member no longer lives in the community, and so we try to fill that vacancy as soon as possible, especially if a town meeting is coming up. So the fourteen days is reasonable, but the ten days works as well.
Thank you. And the next motion to amend, Richard Cirke, Precinct two, moves to amend the main motion by not striking out the language in Chapter three, Section six, two dash ten dash one, and two dash ten dash three. So I refer you to the proposed charter for the twenty twenty-four fall town meeting that is contained in the book. There is language from the current charter in black, additions and updates are indicated in blue, deletions are indicated in the red strike-through, and further, I can tell you that in the report and recommendation, the Advisory and Finance Committee, you have information related to the changes. So given these motions, we're going to need to look at these various documents. And so, having said that, that would be Mr. Cirke's motion to amend. I am going to go back and just announce that with respect to Mr. Peiser's motion, we're waiting, we're awaiting an agreement between the Select Board and the School Committee on the morning of town meeting, and if that happens, which we expect it will, that Mr. Peiser will be withdrawing his amendment. So with that being said, I'm going to hold off on that particular motion, because we have another motion now to amend, and it's the third one. Don Williams, Precinct eight, moves to amend the main motion by amending the first sentence of Chapter three, Section six, two dash ten dash two to read, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, no representative of town meeting shall vote on, and then add the words, and must abstain on any town meeting article. So this is a change, amending what we have as the main motion from the Advisory and Finance Committee. And a reminder to town meeting members, town meeting is being presented main motions that may not be exactly verbatim as to what is contained in the warrant. So that is the third motion to amend. The fourth motion to amend is from George McKay. George McKay, Precinct eight, moves to amend the main motion by deleting at least two additional meanings from the first sentence and replacing it with additional meanings as determined by the precinct chair in Chapter three. So again, many motions to amend, and we refer you to the town website, you'll be getting a copy of these changes, and these are all under Article twenty-two, we have as originally moved, and then we will determine whether it is amended on these four motions to amend. Article twenty-three, Chapter four, elections. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted nine yes, one no. The Advisory and Finance Committee voted nine yes, one no, zero abstentions, recommends the town meeting approve Article twenty-three. Approval of this article will amend Chapter four of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. And we do have a motion to amend under Article twenty-three. Lori Downs, Precinct seventeen, moves to amend the main motion by not striking out the following sentence. The ballot shall identify candidates seeking reelection with the phrase "candidate for reelection" placed next to the candidate's name. That's in Chapter four. And that's a majority vote, and then the main motion would be a two-thirds vote. Moving on, we have on Article twenty-four, Town Administration. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously ten zero zero and recommends town meeting approve Article twenty-four. Approval of this article will amend Chapter five of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. And we have a motion to amend. Don Williams, Precinct eight, moves to amend the main motion by not striking out Section eight, Establishment and Scope of the Department of Finance, Section thirteen, Establishment and Scope of the Department of Plan and Development, and Section six, Department of Public Works, and Chapter five. That's the majority of the main motion, two-thirds. And then we have the Advisory and Finance Committee. If they vote not to amend their recommendation, then Ms. Butler moves the town will vote to authorize select board petition the general court to enact legislation pursuant to General Laws, forty-three B, Section ten. And in that case, we have a motion to amend from Mr. Canty, Vice Chair. He moves to amend the main motion by not striking out Chapter five, Section one, town manager. Mr. Canty, do you care to be heard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a vote of five to zero with no abstentions, the Select Board recommends town meeting not strike out this particular language as it relates to the education and employment qualifications of a prospective town manager candidate. The community of Plymouth is a challenging community. It has urban, suburban, and rural areas within it. It has over sixty-five thousand full-time residents in it. There's a lot going on in this particular community. We believe that this community should not be the first community that a town manager has ever worked at as a town manager. We also believe that the education qualifications are vital to ensure quality candidates for this particular position because of how important the role of town manager is. We are thankful for the services of the town manager we currently have, who does meet these qualifications, and we would like to encourage any prospective future applicant to also mirror those or similar qualifications as well. We think it would be irresponsible to remove this and allow for someone who may be popular enough to get four members of a future select board to vote them into the position of town manager, but not qualified enough to do the job effectively. We were very strong on this particular point and think it's important to ensure quality leadership in this particular role. The select board is generally in favor of the elimination of some of the other HR-manual-esque components of the charter proposal, but this one in particular is too important to remove in our view. And for those reasons, we encourage this language to be maintained in the charter going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. And we also have another motion to amend. Don Williams, Precinct eight, moves to amend the main motion by not striking out Section eight, Establishment and Scope of the Department of Finance, Section thirteen, Establishment and Scope of the Department of Plan and Development, and Section six, Department of Public Works, in Chapter five. And at this point, we would handle the motions and then go to the main motion. Motion's a majority, main motion, two-thirds. Article twenty-five, Charter Amendment Statutorily Required Public Bodies. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee does not approve Chapter six, voted two yes, twelve no, one abstention, as proposed by the Charter Review Committee. The Advisory and Finance- Turn it on. Sorry. The Advisory and Finance Committee does not approve Chapter six, voted two yes, twelve no, one abstention, as proposed by the Charter Review Committee. The Advisory and Finance Committee, as opposed to elected officials being the appointing authority, citing a definite conflict of interest, but they do not support the open meeting process for applicant interviews. The Advisory and Finance Committee therefore recommends that the town meeting amend Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposal Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk, and approve the recommended language as follows. Did I read the whole thing?
We have the text. So this will be your main motion, and is the motion of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and this will be the main motion presented at town meeting. And it's a two-thirds vote. And at this time, we go on to Article twenty-six, Charter Amendment Charter Created Public Bodies. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee does not approve Charter seven, as proposed by the Charter Review Committee. The Advisory and Finance Committee feels strongly that in the absence of the precinct chair, the precinct vice chair have the ability to vote. The Advisory and Finance Committee therefore recommends the town meeting amend Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk, and approve the recommended language as follows.
And you have the language here on the committee of precinct chairs. Again, this is the main motion, so it'll be a two-thirds vote, and there will be discussion on that. Next, moving on, we have Article twenty-seven. It's the operation of town boards, commissions, and committees. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends unanimously eleven zero zero. Town meeting approve Article twenty-seven. Approval of this article will amend Chapter eight of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as shown in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee.
Thank you. It's a two-thirds vote. And Article twenty-eight is general provisions. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends unanimously ten zero zero. Town meeting approve Article twenty-eight. Approval of this article will amend Chapter nine of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. It's a two-thirds vote. And Article twenty-nine, Charter Amendment Renumbering. Gail Butler.
The Advisory and Finance Committee voted unanimously ten zero zero and recommends the town meeting approval Article twenty-nine. Approval of this article will amend the renumbering of the Plymouth Town Charter as shown in the Town of Plymouth Charter Review Committee Proposed Amendments, August twenty twenty-four, as on file with the town clerk.
And Charles Vautrain, Precinct four, town meeting member, moves to amend the main motion to revise and renumber the Town of Plymouth Charter as follows. For those of you here this evening who have a copy, town meeting members will receive a copy of that tomorrow, and it'll be on the website. At this time, I'd like to invite Martha Vautrain to come forward, and she'll be speaking on this motion to amend Article twenty-nine. And this is debatable. It is a majority vote. And welcome, Martha Vautrain.
Greetings.
And I believe you have slides. Is that correct? We have a presentation. And so we're going to be going to that momentarily. While we're waiting to do that, I'll talk about the Article thirty-one citizens petition, the Gaza ceasefire resolution. That's been ruled out of order. Town meeting does not do resolutions. And so that's the primary reason for ruling it out of order, although, as secondarily, we would note that it's outside the scope of authority for town meeting to be taking action on matters involving international conflict among countries. So that is ruled out of order. And we're now going to go to Martha Vautrain. Welcome, Martha.
I'd like to say regarding this motion, that while there are many parts of the committee for, of the CRC document that I agree with, I believe that the reorganization of the charter chapters and sections, as noted in the table of contents, needs to be improved for three reasons. Number one, it's important to preserve the chapter order of legislative branch followed by executive branch. Number two, to preserve the moderator section in the legislative branch, and to preserve both branches of governments' names. And I want to stress that there is no change being proposed to the content or the substance of the sections that are being reorganized. And there's, these changes only address Chapters two, three, and four. The reason that I believe it's important to preserve the legislative branch of government in Chapter two and the legislative branch of, and the executive branch of government in Chapter three, is that reminds us of the importance of government by the people, and it aligns with other charter or constitutional documents, such as our U.S. Constitution, whereas where the legislative chapter is first. The importance of keeping moderator section in the legislative chapter is because that is the most important job that the moderator does, and in, and all four subsections in the moderator section are about town meeting. Preserving the naming, preserving and naming both branches of government is very important in terms of balance of power, or balance of power and the concept of when one falls or is gone, both can fall. The balance is gone. The concept of townwide elected officials does not need to be included in a charter, nor does it need to be to take the place, as it has of the name executive branch, in the recommendation of the Charter Review Committee. That list of townwide officers can easily be included in a user guide. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is Martha Vautrain, speaking on behalf of a motion presented by Charles Vautrain, town meeting member. And that can be debated. It's a majority vote, and then we would go to the main motion. At this time, after we vote on Article twenty-nine, I've also ruled Article thirty-two out of order. It has to do with public comment. The form of the petitioned article did not refer to a bylaw revision. I've encouraged the petitioner to come back in the spring and appropriately reference a bylaw. Finally, Article thirty-three is a citizens petition regarding the airport. Again, outside the scope of authority for town meeting, we have the legislative branch. We do not interfere and go outside of our lane into other branches of the government. The airport has an executive branch group, that being the Airport Commission, that has control custody of the airport, and therefore is appropriate that the petitioners go to the Airport Commission. Secondarily, court, case law currently is that courts have ruled that indefinite moratorium is also not allowed. And so that would be a secondary reason, but the primary reason being that it is outside the scope of the authority for Plymouth Town Meeting. And they are certainly welcome to come in the spring if they want to participate in the debate on the budget for the airport. So that completes the preview and overview of the articles, and we will be providing final set of motions at the end of next week. But in the meantime, you should expect to get tonight's motions soon, because we've been working very hard in order to respond as quickly as possible to all the motions. I want to thank the members of our panel. I thank Nicole Manfredi, our Assistant Town Moderator. Thank the First Vice Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, Gail Butler, the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, Stephen Neiman. Also want to thank Kevin Canty, the Vice Chair of the Select Board, Kelly McKelley, the town clerk, and Derek Brandezi, town manager. Again, thank everyone here who's attending and those of you who are watching this live presentation on October tenth, and we're going to adjourn it a little after seven P.M. Good day.